Welcome, everybody, to this joint meeting of the Canyon City Planning Commission and City Council. It is March 6, 2024, 6:00 PM. Could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Dennehy. Absent, Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein. Absent, Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Planning Commission Chairman R. Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Clark. Absent, Commissioner Clement.
Here.
Commissioner Ledoux. Absent, Commissioner Wellatt. Absent, Commissioner Suther.
Here.
Commissioner A. Smith.
Here.
Thank you for that. This evening, we're going to be talking about draft ordinances amending Chapter 17 pertaining to signs in the Central Business CB District Downtown. And Ryan, are you?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. You know, we've been talking about feather flags in particular and how that affects the Central Business District and, you know, how that relates to the sign code. During the COVID pandemic, we did not enforce the feather flag ordinance during that time. And when the emergency declaration was ended, we started an education campaign and then started enforcement after that. We had, tonight, you have two different ordinances in front of you, proposed ordinances, one that's put forth by the merchants and one that's put forth by staff, trying to come to some type of compromise either way on how to handle feather flags in the Central Business District. And with that, I'll turn it over to Patrick, who has a presentation.
Well, in fact, Ryan just took my first three bullet points.
Sorry. Didn't even see the slide. I just shortened my presentation.
I'm happy about that, actually. So, yes, beginning in 2023, once the pandemic was declared over, I was directed to recommence enforcement of feather flag, the feather flag prohibition within the Central Business District. This obviously drew a reaction from the merchants. And as a result of that, beginning in the fall, in September, we had a series of meetings with representatives of the Downtown Merchants Committee. These meetings, depending upon the date of the meeting, were variably attended by Councilmember Worthington, Councilmember Schmisher, and Mayor Protem Hamrick at various times. And as a result of that, those conversations yielded a version of an ordinance that would amend Title 17 that went to a general discussion with council back in January. And following that, staff also took a stab at making a draft to amend title with the sign code, Title Chapter 1707. So with both of these visions, with both of these versions, we had some ongoing meetings through January and February. And what you're going to see tonight are the versions of the ordinances, each based upon these conversations and some of the negotiations that happened, some of the compromises that have happened in these as well. So just to summarize again, both of the versions to be presented this evening are the product and negotiation between the merchants and the city where both sides accepted some compromises. Now, I have to go into a little bit of context about why the Central Business District has the regulations that pertain to signage that it does. Central Business District and its associated sign regulations exist as they do for several reasons. Beginning more than a decade ago, the city began conducting public outreach and input efforts to shape what kind of downtown the citizens wanted. The result were a series of policy documents which have been accepted by city councils. This includes our strategic plan, the Downtown Strategic Plan from 2012, the Vision Plan from 2014, the Strategic Master Plan from 2017, and of course, the recently adopted Comprehensive Plan from 2021. Now, these documents...
Can I ask a quick question? So you're saying that pre-pandemic, was this sign, feather flag ban actually ever enforced?
The ban existed in the code.
It existed, but wasn't it ever enforced?
I don't know that it was an issue pre-pandemic to the extent that it was when I was directed to begin enforcement again.
And I'm just asking because I've never heard of the... That they were banned prior to them suddenly after the pandemic was over.
Prior to the adoption of the UDC in 2021, there was a prohibition on feather flags in the Central Business District that carried into the new code. So these documents that I have here have informed not only design considerations for widened sidewalks and bump outs at intersections, they've also formed the basis of regulations pertaining to uses and signage downtown. And it should be noted, these documents, these recommendation documents date back to, I mean, they date back more than a decade at this point. So these have informed what we have in the way of design standards for downtown and what we have in the way of regulations for signage. So at their core, the regulations in place for the Central Business District are focused on achieving a walkable pedestrian-oriented environment. And central to this focus is ensuring a human scale is maintained to facilitate pedestrian appeal. That bears a little bit of examination, human scale specific. So human scale is key to understanding how the Central Business District differs from all other non-residential districts in the city. Buildings, windows, doors, sidewalk widths, and street furniture are designed to be comfortable for human activity on the streets such as walking. Signage is similarly scaled down. Thus, signs are to be made comfortable for pedestrians rather than drivers. In a pedestrian, in a presentation last fall that was dated, called Colorado Downtown Streets, DOLA, CDOT, and CDPHG, that's Colorado Department of Local Affairs, Colorado Department of Transportation, the Colorado Division of Public Health and Environment, posited that perceptions on signs increases as the slower one moves. This is why signage is oriented to appeal to pedestrians first. You can see, these are some exhibits that came from that presentation concerning, this is sort of at 15 miles per hour in a car, this is what a driver perceives. This one here, although, let's see if I can move this out of the way, that's at 30 miles per hour. And then this is basically a cross-section of what the public realm in downtown, what your street environment is designed to be, to facilitate that kind of view corridor, vision corridor. Now, with that in mind, two draft ordinances are being presented this evening for discussion. And here is a summary of both. First, we'll go over the merchant's draft. Wall-mounted signs will remain in the category of temporary signs that do require permits. Feather flags are available to use by permit in the CB Zone District for up to four non-concurrent display periods totaling 30 days per calendar year, with at least a 30-day separation between display periods.
That was not one of our draft. That was something that you guys had requested as part of your draft. That was not one of part of our original draft. Our draft was...
I thought the conversation we had right...
We had the conversation that was something that you had requested, that we put it there and put it as part of your draft.
Okay.
So that part is not part of our original draft, but it was something that we discussed. It was something that we had discussed.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't want a 30-day break between display periods?
No, we had wanted a full-time use during the things. That was part of our original draft. We had discussed part of using as a limited use for sales and stuff. That was part of the discussion we had, but that was not part of our merchant draft.
So banners that say...
The flags, feather flags only.
Yeah, but banners that say sale happening, that could have the 30-day thing, but the banner, the feather flags were for permanent daily use.
Yeah, that was part of, that was part of our original draft. We did discuss that at the meeting, and that was something that you guys had wanted to put on there.
My recollection of the discussion was that we had talked about feather flags being allowed for promotional purposes, and we were talking about this.
That was part of your discussion, yes.
Yeah, that's what you wanted, that's not what we wanted.
Didn't we talk about we were going to make that change at the meeting?
We discussed this adding it to your draft, yes. So, but, you were discussing part of our draft. This was, that was not part of our original draft.
And I understand.
That is what it is, as a change.
The draft that is included with the council and planning commission agenda this evening does make that change. And that change was made because I do recall that we discussed it.
We did discuss it, but that was part, the way that that was reading was certainly was part of this.
My point is, the version that's being displayed this evening, or being shown this evening, discussed this evening, is the version that was in the agenda that was an outcome of the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago.
Technically, there's three. There would be the merchant's original request, the staff draft, and then the kind of compromise draft.
The merchant draft is, we were asked after the January 3 meeting, when we had basically taken a look at the merchant draft and said, there are some problems with this, we don't recommend that it move forward, we were asked to take a look at what could be done to change it to make it more palatable. So the version that's in the packet this evening is the version that's gone through that rounded revision.
And this version is the same version that was presented to City Council on January 3.
With the 30 days?
Yes, it had that provision.
I don't think we ever considered 365 days to be at council. I mean, I don't think that's what was...
No, what we presented, I just pulled it up from the January 3 meeting, it's the exact same language.
It's still good to know what their original request was, or is that compromise of 30 days?
So another decision here was that the maximum height of feather flag signs would remain at eight feet as it currently is in the code, but there would be provisions in there. We actually have legal non-conforming provisions in Chapter 1711 that would allow for feather flag signs that are currently higher than eight feet to allow to be used until such time as they were deemed weatherborne, well, beaten and then not suitable for display.
To be clear, that's the only thing in a feather flag that could be legal non-conforming. So if a merchant had one, if a merchant had more feather flags, then is allowed in the code, that would not be permissible. So the only thing that could be legal non-conforming is the height.
The current definition on flags will be amended to include faded and ripped as disqualifying characteristics for display. And then all feather flag signs in the Central Business District must use a base container for support typically designed for this purpose. There were some images that were sent to me that were included in the ordinance, based upon, again, the conversation that we had right at the end of February. Now, the staff version that we prepared has also gone through some revisions based upon the conversations that we had last week with merchants. So number one, the version in the staff version, feather flags are available to use by permit in the Central Business District for up to 28 days per calendar year. This is at the discretion of the merchants. They can have the sign for one day for a promotion and have a 27-day bank of time remaining, and they can use that however they want. They can, you know, have it out for a week, they can have it out for two weeks, whatever versions of periods of time they want that would add up to a total of 28 days per calendar year, that would be what this version is pointing to. There is also a definition of flags added as a type of sign, the 1707. Flags can be a maximum under this definition of 12 square feet. They cannot protrude above the roof or parapet wall of a building, and they must be mounted in such a way that the bottom of the flag must be at least seven feet above the ground. One flag shall be permitted for 12 linear feet of building frontage. Maximum area for projecting signs under this, oops. Slippery, isn't it? Maximum area for projecting signs is increased to 12 square feet. Awning and canopy signs are increased to 75% of the face of the canopy or awning where the sign is printed or affixed to. Right now, that's at 50%. Window signs, trying to move this. Window signs are increased to allow up to 50% of the square footage of the window where the sign is located. Right now, that's at 25%.
Is now a good time to ask about flags and just exactly what that refers to and how they're mounted? In Section 7, it says flags, in the proposed staff draft, it says flags means a temporary sign made of cloth or lightweight material attachable by one edge to a building and does not include a pennant sign. So I'm not clear what that means exactly. Is it, it's not attached by like a flag pole that sticks out from the building, it's flush to the building, or what does it mean?
No, it's not flush to the building.
It's not flush.
It will have some sort of an apparatus that attaches to the building, rather like a flag pole. The flag can be either vertical or they can be angled.
So what does this mean, attachable by one edge? That was just like...
By, if the flag is on a pole, the edge at the bottom of the pole is what's being attached.
Maybe they need to go to a building, but...
Yeah, or change the wording or something.
Well, that's not the only problem with that.
Yeah, that's not the only problem with that section.
Right, well, let's just cover this and then we can keep going on with our other issues. But the way it's written, I thought it meant one edge of this cloth flag was somehow attached and not the other three. It just wasn't clear to me what that meant. But we're talking about like a flag that's on a pole.
Yeah.
Coming out from the wall.
The pole would be attached to the building. I think what we're trying to avoid is the idea that there would be a flag pole sunk into the sidewalk amenity zone.
Might be just a wording. I mean, maybe everyone else understood, but...
And similar to how we provided examples or diagrams for other parts of the code, we could provide an example or diagram if that is wanted.
Got it.
So both ordinances allow feather flags for limited durations per calendar year. Merchant's draft is 30 days broken into four non-consecutive periods. Staff draft is 28 days, no specified period duration.
Oh, I thought that the merchant draft was 30, 34 periods of 30 days, so a total of 120 days, with each period not being more than 30 days.
That is not my recollection.
I think they're four 30-day periods working up by 30-day periods.
Okay. So that is 120 days? Yes.
Otherwise, I think there's very little, very little difference between the two.
The staff draft also offers a variety of sign area increases for sign types that are more traditionally used in downtown pedestrian environments, such as projecting or blade signs, canopy and awning signs, window signs, and flags.
So can I ask a question just about the wording in your memo there, where it says project signs, also known as blade signs?
Projecting, sir.
Oh, okay. I think the "ing" is left off. I get it. Thanks.
Now, the intent in the staff draft is to provide greater flexibility in permissible signs within the CB Central Business District to both appeal to pedestrian scale and to encourage the discontinuance of feather flags signed downtown by providing a wider palette of sign types. Now, there are also programs that staff has offered to the merchants in addition to the proposed sign ordinance modifications that include light pole banners along Main Street that could be dedicated to the promotion of Main Street businesses. This would have to be a budget item, as the city would be partially funding this as well. New signage on facades is eligible, I'm sorry, yeah, new signage is eligible under the facade improvement grant program. So anyone who wanted to put in, for instance, a projecting sign, could use that as part of the application for a facade improvement grant with DURA. Block-by-block directory signs located in the bump outs at the intersections along Main Street would indicate which merchants can be found on any particular block going up and down Main. We've also talked about marketing assistance for local businesses if there is a consensus on hours of operation. Traffic and traffic counts and speed study along Main Street and continued public input on appropriate scale for downtown. This is another item that we, in an effort to continue seeking public input on the vision for downtown. This is another item that we can continue on, and I believe we actually already have some counts, some traffic counts.
Traffic counts, yeah. Engineering department is currently working on traffic counts and the possibility of lowering the speed limit on Main Street itself, at least in the core downtown.
Now, there was a question that came up as to the effect of the historic nature of buildings if people started putting in blade signs, for example. So actually, we found this historic picture, some of these historic pictures of signs along Main Street here, and you will see, at least in the 1890s, 1900s, and 1910s, there were a lot of blade signs, projecting signs that were in use. And again, that has to do with the fact that you didn't have vehicular transportation at the time, that was all pedestrian. So the signs were scaled to pedestrian usage. So that would conclude the staff presentation, or actually, the recommendation, let me go there. Staff is recommending that the General Government Committee and Planning Commission discuss the two draft ordinances and provide direction on which parts of each should be included in a final version, which can then be taken to public hearings before both Planning Commission and City Council. Staff is also recommending that the incentive programs described be discussed for potential implementation. And with that, that is staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you for that, Patrick. So, you know, it seems to me that we're not in agreement yet on what the proposal should be. Do I understand that correctly?
I think we're in the right step, there's just a couple of things that I think that we're still kind of in limbo over. But there is something before we kind of go further, that I found some contradicting items on you guys on the staff proposal that either needs clarification or something. And I want to go to Section 6 regarding the flags themselves and not feather flags. These are the flags that would be attached, sticking on by hand point from the building. Part of the clarification, just on my part, on number three, it says the number size a maximum of one flag sign shall be permitted per every 12 linear feet of the building. Does this mean that the signs have to be at least 12 feet apart? As long as if you have 24 feet, so you're technically allowed two signs, two of these flags, do they have to be 12 feet apart? Or because like we attach them to our poles, those are only about eight or 10 feet apart, but we have more than 24 feet of actual space to actually legally be the 24?
So this is to...
So it's just clarification.
Yeah, so this is to determine how many flags a storefront could have, is the linear foot, and they do not have to be spaced well. It is not prescriptive on space.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, the part that I have contradicted, and part of it had to do with the comment that you had made at the meeting. But it says, flag signs shall be secret to the building and maintained 17 feet above the building. Okay, that's not the problem. They should not be hindered pedestrian traffic and shall not project more than three feet from every building. Problem is, you put the pole out, it's going to sit more than three feet away from the building. The end of the pole sticks more than three feet from the bench of the building on a regular pole that would handle a 12-square-foot sign, flag. That's one thing. You had mentioned the fact, well, maybe we could increase the pole length, which then again makes it even farther than the three foot. Then, also the other contradiction part is that flags, as per your definition, means a temporary sign made of cloth or lightweight material attachable by one edge to a building. Those, according to that definition and according to things, those are not permitted. What type of sign are permitted if they're not made out of cloth? Because all of those, all of those flags that are going to be attached to those poles are made out of cloth. But yet, according to your thing, flag poles shall not be, or those flags are not permitted, or the flag poles are not...
Under Section 7.
So... Says flag poles are not permitted. Are you, so it needs to be clarified that, yeah, it's a flag pole, but it's not one that goes into the ground, it's one specifically made for ones attached to the building. So...
Because you have actively said, you can use a flag pole, but flag poles are permitted.
Yeah, so it needs to be clarified on that. And are the flags actually, are they considered temporary signs? Because, I mean, they would be under the same guidelines of being removed at the end of close of the business day.
Flags would be considered temporary signs, not subject to permit, under this matrix.
Okay, but they can be used every day, as long as they're removed.
They have to be removed at the end of the day.
At the end of the day, which is one other thing.
We discussed that. If the flag is being posted such that the lowest point of the flag has to be at least seven feet above the ground, that's going to require the use of a ladder every day to go out and remove the flag, that seems a bit excessive. I think it would be up to the individual owner as to whether or not they wanted to leave the flags out there. So I don't see a problem with not specifying that the flags have to be brought in every...
Was that to them and how much wear and tear they...
Yes.
Yeah, I think currently we have some merchants that use those types of flags, and they just say open them. So when they're not open for business, they take them down.
Right.
Could you clarify, Patrick, what flag poles shall not be permitted for any temporary lasting use? Section 6, F4, the last...
That was the one clarifying, saying that it has to be the one, a flag pole that attaches to the edge of the building, not put into the ground.
I think that means a flag will put into the ground rather than one attached to the building, so probably needs more clarification. Austin, did you, did you have something you wanted to add?
Nope, I was just going to say what Patrick said, we're just talking about horizontal poles in that case, so we can clarify that.
Opposed to a ground-mounted one?
Yes. Yeah, it needs a little more ground, or not permitted. And one other part that I saw too, that might need a little more clarification, just because when I read it the first couple of times, I had to read it several times before, but I thought, wait a minute. On section, the sixth, the Central Business District, Section B, right underneath your bases on there, where it has the picture of the bases, it says, feather signs and their bases must be brought in when the business closes. It's like, it really should be, say, at the end of business day, because to me, when I first read it, it's like, business closed, well, if they're open two years...
They can leave it out two years.
Right, it's just, it's as clarification as to how it reads, just to make it very clear that there's no loopholes in the system.
At the end of the business day?
At the end of the business day, just to make sure that, you know, because of the business, well, I'm still open, I'm opening business, I'm not closing my doors permanently. So, and that was the first thing that hit my mind when I read it, is like, well, we're not closing our doors permanently, so I can leave it out.
That's an easy fix to make.
Yeah, so it was just a clarification to make it more plainly simple. So, okay, I think.
And just for clarification for myself, you're... you're, we're currently discussing the downtown business district, but the sign ordinance as a whole is not being followed throughout the city. There are many instances of people not following the ordinance as dictated. Um, with places that have multiple flags on a, on a property, having twelve, fourteen, sixteen foot flags.
This was discussed at the last meeting.
Yeah, and it is something that, once we can get more detailed and things, then it would then be able to be...
I have contacted the owners of some of those businesses and informed them that due to the moratorium on enforcement, they aren't getting any kind of a notice of violation right now, but when that moratorium is lifted, they should be prepared, we will be contacted.
Okay, because as a downtown business, I honestly feel like we're being picked upon. I mean, to be quite honest.
We don't want you to feel that way. We want to do just what you've said, and that is...
Those are all my three marks.
Look at the whole city. Yeah.
I think those were all of my three marks of contradiction and clarification that we did, so...
If there was a, a misunderstanding about, um, the, yeah, the number of days, I wonder if, if that needs to be...
Can you live with the twenty-eight days or not?
Written as well.
That's, that's still a good point.
Um, if that ends up staying, then I think, I wonder if we need to clarify, um, section to the display period. It currently says the... Armended dis, permitted display period of a permitted temporary sign shall be a maximum of thirty days that total of four non-concurrent display periods shall be permitted.
Yeah, I, I interpret that as a hundred and twenty days.
Oh.
Okay.
In the merchant version.
And we have to get a permit each time we want to...
Yes.
...display?
Yes.
Which is, I think, cost of...
Non-costing. Non-costing.
We should just...
We, we don't, we generally don't put a fee schedule into a code, an ordinance, a, a, you know, municipal code item, because anytime we go to change the fees, that's another ordinance.
No, I was just going to say, we should all be clear that this is still all under discussion, that we have these two versions. That doesn't mean there can't be a third or a seventeenth version, and because all the pieces of this are.
In addition to the days, what else are sticky points?
Those, I think, were the biggest ones. I mean, we're willing to concede on the eight foot. I mean, yeah, most of us have eight, have twelve foot flags right now. But if we have the time in order to, where we don't have to go out as soon as the soda door, especially with those that have just bought flags, you know, they're, they're going to, you know, happen to do that, those things. So we're willing to concede definitely on those, um, given the time to replace them when they need to be replaced. Um, we can understand that, um, we can work with that. And then, of course, with devices and stuff like that, so, um, you know, some of us, you know, we use them for a very specific reason. Some of them use them strictly for the sales. So it's, it's one of those things that kind of, you know, if, if, either way, it does, it, it just kind of matters.
I think for the most part, um, the vendor, or the merchants, twenty-eight days is just really not enough for the way we use them. It just doesn't, doesn't work well.
As a voice to that comment, I, my business doesn't do sales. I'm a very tiny storefront. I use my flag as an indication that I, I exist here on Main Street. I'm here as a, as a big...
And that's where a lot of...
Yeah, and that's where a lot of... Visibility.
We use it as visibility, not for sales, so...
So, that's...
Yeah, and I know that some of them use them strictly for sales. So it's, it's one of those things that are kind of in between, so...
I have a question. If you thought a grant from the city could put one of those pendant signs that went out, that was...
One of the...
Projecting signs.
The only problem I have is if my building owner would be willing to go with that, um, and costs is the big one. That's the, that's the only frustrating point that I've ever been able to... The feather flags are cheap.
But if there's, even if there's a grant, it is landlord won't allow or the building owner won't allow it.
And that's a lot of the problems that we have, is that a lot of the building owners won't allow that, even with cost or anything, because, I mean, even us, we went to the masons and said, "What if we pay for it?" And they told us, "No." And we were going to put it with their sign so that it was part of, it was, it was just...
An extension of their...
An aesthetic to their sign, and they told us, "No." And that's, that's a lot of the issue that we've heard, is it's not that the merchants themselves don't want them or are willing to put them in, it's the owners of the buildings that we have the issue, that have the issue with putting it off. So whether or not it's because they don't know that there's grants out there, or they just don't want it, we don't...
Or they don't want damage to their building, or if I went to you and you put up a sign and you leave, do I have to remove that sign? So there's a lot of, you know, that.
And that's the thing.
So on, on that point, there's, you know, the city can establish regulations that allow uses of signs and, you know, time, place and manner, all that kind of stuff.
Right.
The issue with the building owners is not something the city can really step into.
And, yeah, we understand that, which is why we go back to the feather flags being...
The fact that that is a temporary cheap piece of equipment that a brand new, only year old startup business like myself can use as a, as a projection and an indication to the general populace on the street that I exist, that I'm open, and what my business is. It doesn't require me to help the city or the building owner.
Gotcha.
Right. Yeah, and that's, and that's the point.
That's the workaround, really, from, from your perspective, that's the workaround...
Right.
To, of permanent signs that may not, even though we may have regulations that say, hey, they're fine, if the business owner says, if the building owner says, "No way," then where, then where are you?
Yeah, and that's still, that's still the same case for me with the pole mount on the building, I mean, all of that.
Would the building owner say no if you put window signs in? Or maybe an awning with signs on the awning?
We couldn't do the awning.
The awning wouldn't for me because I'm too close to a tree.
And the awning again is being attached to the building and where the building, well, the building owner allowed that. That's the thing.
It's still mounting.
And the window signs go back to the same thing. They're flat on the building. And you can't see them even walking, and you can't even see them walking down those pedestrians.
Except the building sign is here and you're walking this way.
So that's, that's the whole thing, is trying to work around the visibility of looking down the street, whether you're a pedestrian or where you're in a vehicle either way, that you can see something down the road, that, hey, there's something down there that is not attached to the building, that the building owner doesn't have a say as to, "I can have this or not," because it's not part of their building. And that was the whole thing of trying to work around it, is because so many of the building owners will not allow it, even if the city allows it. And again, it's a matter of, is it because they don't know about the grants and the payment of it? Or is it just because they say, "No, I don't want..."
Personal preference.
Right, yeah, I mean, there's so many things, but...
Or just, you know, "I have a historic building, I don't want things physically attached to it."
Yeah, so that was the thing, that was one of our ways of trying to figure out a way of a solution that makes it usable for the merchants and merchant, and usable for pedestrians and vehicles both.
Is there any rough estimate on how many of the businesses downtown rent versus own their own building? Or have control over what they do?
I would say seventy, seventy, eighty percent, if not more.
Rent...
Yeah, I would guess that.
Very few, very few of the businesses downtown actually own their buildings.
Yeah, there's a handful, but not a lot.
That's too bad that the business owners, or the building owners don't want to set you up for success.
I was just going to say, it's like...
Because the longer you are successful, the better...
You know, and I'll be honest with you, you know, the, the Masonic Lodge has been there since, I, I believe, eighteen...
Eighteen eighty-one?
Eighteen eighty-one is when it was built. And they've always had a retail space where we're at. Um, and they've had a series of successes and not such great, um, people in, in businesses in there. And they love us, and they are, you know, willing to do about anything to help us be successful. But that is still a historic building, and attaching something to a building with such long history that's been in the same organization since it first was built, I can understand their reluctance. And it has nothing to do with whether or not they want us to be successful, because I guarantee they do. And I guarantee that they appreciate us and want us to be there. But it's still a matter of they have a historic building.
I, I don't know that the city has a solution for what to do about a property owner that doesn't want to allow this. I think from the city, from staff's perspective, what we're attempting to do here is open up more options for signage on Main Street. That's, that's ultimately the goal of this exercise.
Right.
Let's say, just to at least have the option, there's no harm in having the option, because there will be some building owners that will be okay with...
Yeah, yeah. But for somebody like Brendan, where his really only viable signage is that feather flag, if, if the building owner won't allow a blade sign or, or anything else.
Can I, can I ask for a...
Can I ask for clarification for me? What is the amenities zone for? Because that was, I thought, I misunderstood. I thought that was for signage for businesses, but I think that's my misunderstanding. It's, you know, signage in, in the form of A-frame signs are allowed in the amenities zone for promoting businesses, if you're doing a sidewalk sale, or you have other things that you can put out there that are, you know, trying to, it, it, trying to draw people in.
Okay, so we, so it can use signage and things like that?
But not a flag.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I did have a proper understanding of that, because that's where, when all this started, that's where I was putting, yeah, my temporary base for the feather flag. It's just...
And just to be clear... And just to be clear, you reported your addition to section five D, where it says, "Or within the portion of the public right of way adjacent to the sidewalks outside the pedestrian walking area, which includes seats for street skates." That is such a frickin' hard word to say. Elements, street furniture landscaping, or street trees. That is, you're referring to the amenities zone, correct?
Yes.
That's what I was thinking.
Benches, um, things like bike racks, you know, those are the types of things.
That you're not allowed to attach in.
Yeah, amenities zone, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
How many feather signs actually on Main Street now?
Oh...
I would say, if I was to guess, probably about ten.
I think it's ten or twelve.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now.
And I know Jerry went through and talked to people. Do you have an idea how many feather flags are currently in use through your group?
That day I went on, I didn't, I saw a handful.
Well, it was windy, it was really bad.
It was windy, yeah.
Yeah, which is when they should be coming, so, well, and we're all in agreement on that.
If anyone wants to know, I probably hit about sixty-five percent of the businesses between fourth and eighth. At, I had two people, one "and" and one "no." So I had ninety-six percent, "They don't bother us at all." And that was all just the business owners. And a couple of random customers that also said the same thing. So, as far as the merchants...
What doesn't bother them?
The feather flags in general.
They support it.
Yeah, and even a few people were like, "Oh, I can have feather flags, so now I will get some." I mean, um, that was the general consensus. I had a hard time finding someone to say, "No, we don't want them." I did get one email to the contrary early on. I just wanted to get a consensus downtown that was a pretty good sample of size. It doesn't bother us at all.
But I, the point of the feather flag, as you were saying, Brendan, was to attract people to your business. So if we make it like anyone can have a feather flag, then you do away with that point, right?
Well, there would still be restrictions.
You get lost in the feathers.
Well, and, and the fact of the matter is, not everybody is going to go out and put up a feather flag, even if everybody's allowed one. I mean, Patrick had put up the picture of, like, a sea of feather flags. That's really never been, you know, for a lot of businesses, one, they don't need them. Jerry, he'll, you know, he'll tell you, he doesn't need it, it doesn't serve this business. But he has the patio area that comes out.
People can see down the road that there's something out there.
And there's plenty of businesses that it, you know, a property management company, it doesn't really make sense for. Um, so there's plenty of places that it doesn't make sense for, and plenty of places it does. So I don't think you're ever going to see that sea of, you know, feather flags ever...
And there's still restrictions, there still will be restrictions. You can only have one flag or this or that.
The point is that it could happen. I mean, the, the door is now open, it could happen.
Say no.
And as, as someone who, you know, implements the code, I have to be cognizant.
I, I was thinking about the, the food truck. Um, you know, how we only allow so many food trucks on Main Street? And so, I mean, could it be something like this? Like, we only allow whatever, ten feather flags on Main Street, and the businesses have to rotate or something, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out how that could work.
That comes down to someone enforcing it.
I'm like, well, we're enforcing it now, right? I mean, we're, we're doing that, and...
Well, not while there's a moratorium.
The, the, the situation that might be despite, you know, so...
Get your flag inside of my head.
Yeah, I can see that causing problems in that sense, because then it would turn into a...
Why ask her?
Yeah. So, I just, I'm looking for an alternative to make it easier for people to see. In my current state, I am a small business in front or in between two very busy businesses. So what happens is people horseblinder to the owl, or to Jim's Barber Shop. The amount of people I will watch that will walk by my business, ten, twelve times in a week, and then they will stop at one point or another, because maybe my door is open or something, and they happen to catch that I'm making a lot of noise, and they turn, "I walk here every day for like three weeks. I never knew you were here." The flag solved a ton of them. I don't know if there's, I mean, the sandwich boards work for me, but it, at the same time, it's, it's not... I don't know many people who catch sanity boards unless you're looking for a restaurant, because if it has food and things like that, if it says "open" or "computer repair", I see most people just kind of glancing and breathing by.
Can you make appetite, or, um, routers look appetizing?
I probably could. I can be a hell of a salesman some days.
What, what would your feather, uh, flag say?
My present one says "computer repair."
Computer repair. And so if you put that on a sandwich board, you don't, you get as much...
Not as much, because...
Interest or recognition?
Your, your sightline when someone's walking, and if they're walking with intent, very rarely look down, unless there's something bright and colorful. So I'd have to get something not just...
I have a dental business in Lawrence. He used to have an A-frame sign, but it was at the intersection where people had to stop at the light. That was probably our best advertising we had. We'd advertise like, you know, "First exam" or "Re chief by me." And then Lawrence banned it.
Okay.
But it was, while we laughed, it was our best.
Okay.
You had, you had a...
I was just wondering, um, I mean, it seems like city staff are uncomfortable in twenty-eight days, but not comfortable with a hundred and twenty days. So I'm wondering if, like, if there's a meet in the middle kind of point? Because I think a lot of the other provisions that city staff has proposed are great, and if building owners do allow them in some of the buildings, wonderful, and it does open up a lot more options. And I think that's great. So I'm just wondering, is there a, there a meet in the middle? Or is there a, a point where it's enough of an opportunity for business owners to advertise and to make sure that people know that they're there and that they're open, but also a limited enough number that city staff are comfortable with those?
Yeah, I think, I think, um, you know, you've mentioned the riverfront zoning. It's been a while, because we don't have any active riverfront zoning right now. So I looked through that zoning today, and, uh, it allows for feather flags for five, fourteen day periods, roughly seventy days. So I think if, if we were going to make a concession, I would, I would say we'd go up to seventy to match what we have in riverfront zoning.
Yeah, I think, I just want to throw this out so we don't lose sight of this, and I don't have an answer for it or a position on it, but just, I think another factor that has been discussed from time to time is, do feather flags, the kind that we see and that some businesses use, do they fit as they are now within a historic district? And if they don't quite...
And if they don't quite, what would need to be different? And I'm not, I don't, as I said, I don't know the answer to that, but I just don't want us to lose sight of it.
But you're saying like aesthetically?
That's just, you know, I can see signs. I mean, I would love to have some kind of signage, you know, between, not just in the bump outs, but it would be at high level more or less or pedestrian scale to be more directional type of signs for businesses. I just don't know how to get there. And I do struggle with feather flags not really being what you would see in a historic district.
The Historic Preservation Commission and city staff did go and ask them about this. So they're the certified local government that oversees our historic downtown. They weren't concerned about feather flags because they are temporary in nature and they don't actually. Any of the concerns that were expressed, while they weren't, I don't think it was a unified opinion. The concerns that were expressed were more about mounting things permanently onto buildings. Because that actually changes the historic nature of those, or not the historic nature, but that changes the historic aesthetic front of those buildings. And we do have kind of a historic preservation commission that does that.
Oh, I understand. I think there's still.
Or like the historic appeal. You're talking like the historic appeal of like, yeah, instead of being like cell alleys. Respecting the historic nature of that area and homage to it with the feather.
I could see that, but if you're looking for a business where there, you know, take the computer business. It's like until we were in a meeting and I go to the owl all too often, I have to admit, I did not notice. And it was like, we, I used to have a person that was my computer guru. Well, he's no longer around, so hey, I now have a new buddy that if I need him, he's there and I. So it's one of those, and when I'm looking at historic buildings, I'm there looking at historic buildings. I'm not necessarily looking for a business. But when I'm walking the road, I see the reason for the feather flags in a limited use. Like, and I think to me, I'm seeing at least some of us to the point of, we can get down to the days that we're kind of on the right track. So, but I understand what you're saying. Yeah, and I guess I struggle to, if the city goes in the direction of limiting days, then that doesn't help a business that has their business name on a flag. So I, you know, I, that's why I wish we could have some other kind of signage that would fit the district better, that would serve the needs of the business. I don't know what that is. I've seen things.
But it still had a historic feel in the design.
I've seen signs in some other communities, you know, like if they have awnings or whatever and then, you know, have blades signs.
The end of the street sign, that one. Is that helps that one and then the one that has all of that one?
This one here?
Whoops.
The two blades that were on the.
The directional sign?
Oh, yeah, directional sign. That one there.
Does that fit better to what your thought process is? Oh, I, I think that's almost too much in one place. Maybe it could be, I don't know, scaled so that there are several signs within a block or something.
One of the things that we tried to address, you know, the, you know, the feather flag issue is through the flags themselves. So allowing the flags, having the regulation there. So you're moving that from the sidewalk to the building, still trying to have that movement and that motion that draws attention to the building itself. One of the things that we've talked about from an economic development side is hosting some trainings, bringing some specialists to talk about window displays and merchandising for those that do need merchandising and helping to improve some of the education level on those types of things. Different tips and tricks and psychological things that consumers, you know, you might not even think about that, you know, that draw consumers' attention to helpless scenarios like that because, you know, there may be something that's, that's out there that you can help with that.
I got a question. How did the business owners, how did you come up with a hundred and twenty days?
We originally wanted it just unlimited. We were beat into submission, I think.
It was kind of, it was more of a compromise type thing. Because originally we had wanted it to be, any day that we were open, we could use our flag as long as weather permitting. Because we don't want to put it outside of the woods. If the wind is too flat, because it's going to blow over, it's going to blow away. You know, cause damage and stuff. So, you know, we would want restrictions as to when it could be displayed, but be able to display in a day. The concession that they had wanted was to limit it the time. And so we were trying to come up with a theme as to, okay, how many days in front of those? So that's, that's the compromise that we're trying to actually compromise on between unlimited and limited. That in-between is what does that look like and where can we come to a middle ground on?
Okay, thank you. So I'd just like to say, as a merchant on Main Street, I think it would be impossible for you guys to try to figure out what days to put flags out and what days not to. And what stretches to, you don't know. I just don't understand that concept at all. I'm sorry. But downtown every day at some point, I can see some days there's a lot of foot traffic, some days there's a lot of car traffic.
Right, right.
It's impossible to say, all right, we're going to do it these twelve days and then we'll.
And especially having a permit every time we put it out. Well, how long does it take to get the?
I'm not trying to confuse you at all, but that just does not make any sense to me.
And that was, and that was part of.
Spends a lot of time downtown.
Right. And that's, and that was part of why we had to say, you know, we could put it out whenever we wanted as long as it was within these guidelines of not in the sidewalk or this or that and different things. You know, the size and stuff like that.
One other point that's measurable is when I, you know, I do a lot of stuff with the Chamber of Commerce and I talk to them. And they actually have a, and I know they've taught the city as well, staff. They can actually see that when they have flags out, their amount of visitors that they've had over a year or two that they've been in that location is drastically drops when they don't have a sign. So everything I'm saying is perfectly legitimate.
Well, and somebody at one of the meetings had stated, well, I don't use the flags or signage to find the business.
That's me.
Okay. I know where I'm going and I look it up and I know where I'm at. But in a downtown district, and Brendan's a perfect example, if you don't know he's there, you don't know to go look for him.
I would search online for computer repair though. That's how I would.
But you're one of.
I don't know.
But how many, what about the tourists that go downtown? They don't know that the businesses are there. Where if they're standing or walking down the street and they're at a building or a business and they can see flags down the road because it happens repeatedly, especially in the three and four hundred block of Main Street. There's businesses down there.
And people don't, are unaware.
And people stand at Sixth Street and they don't see anything at all down the road and so they just turn around and go away. Whereas if they see a sign or something, oh, wait a minute, there's something going on down there. Let's go check it out. And so they can physically, even as pedestrians, see that there's something down there where signs on the windows, those type of things. You can't see blocking down the road.
Aren't there more, I think this is more about aesthetics than anything. Is there, I know we're talking about the blade signs and building owners blah blah, but is there a more appealing temporary sign that can go out in front of businesses other than the, you might have used car lot other flag? I mean, isn't there, I know, I mean, I use those, but they need a little more elevation. So is there something that a grant, the city novel, that would have a more appealing type of temporary sign that can go out in front of businesses and be brought in after business ends? Other than the.
The ones, the single, the single point.
Obviously have a problem with because they're not aesthetically pleasing.
I'd like to answer you really quick on the topic of you searching out computer repair. Until, because of Google Analytics, until I get enough reviews and interaction with my business on Google reviews, I won't pop up. I have to get customers, I'm sorry.
Vampire IT?
Yes, sir. Because I'm finally starting to get reviews.
Yeah, see, I don't ever.
So if I was a tourist and my computer wasn't working, I wouldn't walk up into Main Street till I found you.
No, but if you happen to see a sign, you might go, ooh.
Now, did you, did you under computer repair in Canyon City?
Well, I just did computer repair and it assumed I was in Canyon City because I'm in Canyon City.
No, that is fine. That could be begging people. Because when you're below a five review mark, it will give you other technicians in the area that can't find any in Canyon City. It'll send you to Pueblo, it'll send you to Springs. And so that's the difficulty of why I needed that visibility to start getting to the point that someone could look up computer repair and I would finally come up as a pylon and then Canyon City.
Let's go to Jerry's comment. Would there be a sign that we could will out in front of our store that you guys would accept that would not be a feather flag that might be more aesthetically pleasing, but.
Besides A-frames that follow.
Yeah, A-frames are worthless because they blow over and cause a tripping hazard and they're below sideline. So that's kind of why they're not. We have an A-frame and it sits in the back room. We never use it because.
It just blows over.
It just blows over. So would there be another option of a type of sign that you would allow us to put out more often than your twenty-eight days? Or even our hundred and twenty days?
I don't know, but I have an answer to that question. What if we started talking about greater height allowances and a weighted base for your A-frames?
Greater height allowances would be extremely helpful. Because at the point of three blood, I mean, that's a small child for a moment.
With an A-frame, the problem is, is greater height allowance still needs more surface area for the wind to catch.
But if you had a weighted base.
I'm still, I'm still picturing some kind of standardized city signage that would fit with the historic district and directional signs for different stores.
And the problem with standardized city signage is every time a business opens or closes, that's an expense of them having to go in and.
Or whoever is.
Right. And the expense to the business, expense to the city, a lot of expenses.
But if you found this, it could maybe be a compromise. If the city installed these pedestals, this looks like it would be replaceable.
It's kind of classy looking.
That's what I'm wondering. It's not very, I don't know how high it is.
And you could even combine it with historic information about different parts. Hope you get it back.
Is an example for a temporary or are you meaning for the city to put similar to like the sign on the corner there?
Similar, but there'd be more of them. They'd be more in front of each business.
Or maybe at least middle.
You know, then they could be interchangeable. You could put a cell sign. I don't know how easy, but you could be, you could interchange for this special cell or seasonal thing.
And I don't think for the most part, honestly, most of us that are using feather flags are not using them for like, ooh, we're having a special cell. We're mostly using them for visibility so people can find us.
Or see that there's something.
Or see that there's something.
There's lots of examples of cool wavelength signs.
Something like that and then maybe still.
A lot of these cities have them placed.
Why didn't you come up with that like in January?
Like I said at that meeting, I wish I had an opinion on this, but I really don't. I'm pro-business, pro what you guys need. I understand the problem.
But it'd be cheap to put the new signs in and not, can I ask something that's replaceable without costing a lot of money?
Didn't we just buy a new vehicle to water a plant on Main Street? We should be able to do science too.
Maybe they could just nice historic options. Never talking about spending money.
And I mean, that would be much more easily to replace it than the ones on the light poles that would require.
That's footwork, no equipment involved at that point.
And design could coordinate with the bike racks and the benches. Where could all these ties.
And I bet you'd find a rack for that.
At least look for one, right?
Brendan's amazing.
And then maybe if we could do, if we found a way to do something like that, maybe, I'm not sure, sure about this, but maybe there would still be some limited use for feather flags for special events or something. But limited days or.
I think that would make a lot more sense. If you could find a permanent solution that we could have that's visible, then limiting the feather flags would be a lot more easily acceptable to businesses.
Because our thing is, yeah, we're looking at trying to broaden attention to our, to our business, but we also look at it as the fact that you have to, what we're looking for is the ability to see something as a pedestrian or even as we, we're traffic. But as a pedestrian to say, oh, wait a minute, there's a flag down there, there's something, or there's a sign down there that says, wait a minute, there's something down there that I, maybe I should go check it out.
One thing about those blade signs, I remember.
Something that's easily.
Montana, for example.
Easily.
Every single store you could see because they.
When we opened on Fifth Street across from the library, the amount of work it took to get people to go that half a block from Main Street, half a block to find us on Fifth. And we used signage at the corner, we used A-frames. It was probably a little.
We made sure that it wasn't still.
So, I mean, are there other ways to create foot traffic? I mean, you know, we, you know, we did the dinosaur projects several years ago, you know, refreshing something like that. Giving people a reason to walk all the way down.
I think.
More public art.
The dinosaur project is, was cool, but there's no, finding that map of where the dinosaurs are now and some of them are outdated. Some of the dinosaurs have been moved.
That's what I'm saying. But you change it and you refresh it and, you know.
But it has to be able to be seen. You look at the tourists that don't know anything about our town, that don't know what's around or anything like that.
Point of when the chamber puts the flags out front, they get a lot more traffic than if they don't. That's a prime example of tourists are like, oh, there's a chamber. They go in and they're like, oh, there's dinosaurs we could go look for. Okay, but how do they get there without the flag?
And from a standpoint as a service business, I'm not after a surge of tourists. I'm after the locals. The assistance. And that's what I'm out to find is the people who are used to Canyon City so they horseblinder to the business that they no longer have.
And we want those people too.
They don't look for me. Because they're on a deadline to go to this business because that's where they want to go. They don't go. And so that doesn't, that's the, that's the only issue I have at that point for me.
Something that I think that isn't the same as the sign. So this would be in addition to solving the sign issue. But if there were just some kind of a flyer that there was a stack of them in every storefront on Main Street, then that flyer would list out all the current businesses, what their addresses were.
But the problem is, is they change this so much.
Oh, I know.
And we have the regional map that shows a picture of.
We have the regional map and the business. And we have Fremont three sixty has that information.
I'm just wondering if they're just something that was easy for people. Because I know one thing that happens, at least I know I do it and I've heard other people do it. You walk into one business and maybe it's not quite what you thought it was. And so you're asking that business person, is there an egg store here somewhere? And maybe there was something.
Oh, and we talk to people all the time. We, we send them off. You know, I tell them, no, I don't have it. You should go talk to Autumn's attic. No, Autumn's attic's still right of you. You know, I think as downtown businesses, we're very good about sending and promoting each other and.
But if there was just a quick flyer, you could also give them.
We have the Fremont three sixty flyer.
Update pretty regularly.
She keeps an active list of the businesses?
She was trying, but it changes so much. He's gotten a little frustrated with that.
Because it changes so much.
I don't want to.
I mean, she's really good at doing events. She's really good at, you know, pointing them to, you know, shop, different shoppings and stuff like that. But as far as businesses, it's like.
It could be an opportunity for Lori, you know, if there were a QR code with maybe window claims for each of the businesses where if you clicked it, it took you to a map of the businesses and where they are. if you clicked it, it took you to a map of the businesses and where they are.
Oh, wow. That's, that's a good idea. Don't like my paper.
Paper tape is too bad.
Not just, people don't want.
Yeah, it's call.
Everyone's got a cell phone.
I mean, yeah.
Well, no, absolutely.
The idea of trying to make sure that people know that there's other stuff going on, whether it is vehicular or through pedestrian, which are things they can see down the street that there's something there. That's what we're trying to get. And it, it's not just, okay, it's just not for sale, it's not just for this. It's something that people can see. People that don't know the town, even the people that do know the town. It's those that come in and don't know as they're walking up and down the street that says there's other things, that's what we're trying.
I like the idea of the QR code because we have people, it's like, where, where's the best place to eat? That's, I hate that question. Because we've got a lot of great places. Like.
And that's what we're trying to see, QR codes, what's when we come up with. And I think that we're coming up with good salute, good ideas and additional additions and stuff like that. Because yes, having some blade signs, but again, we come to the problem, is it going to be allowed by the business owner, by the business?
Building owner.
Building owner. Because that's compromised. Yeah, you could make them, make them legal and where we can put them on, but then again, will the building owner allow them to do it? So then we have that problem. Then you also have A-frames which blow over and yeah, we can make them bigger, but then that gives them more airspace and they can blow, they can fall over.
Does someone need to?
I don't mean to make work for anybody, but it's almost as if there needs to be some kind of communication with all the building owners, not just the business owners. I mean, maybe they're kind of out of loop. But some of them are out of state.
Yeah.
So that, and that's, and that's what we're trying to find.
As long as I'm being the rest, they don't care. Kind of attitude. Now, I, I won't say that about our building owner because they do care.
Yeah.
They're very supportive.
Would it be feasible to have, um, similar to the one that's over Highway 50? Would it be feasible to have something that goes over Main Street from one to the other or talking between? Down, like, since we'll have the third street at some point as a complete street with clock tower plaza and all of that, but kind of demarcating the other end of Main Street so that people know how far it goes.
Which is an idea as well.
Especially with like Brooklyn and Klein now.
Something over Main Street on the other.
With, oh, on the six, seven, underdog?
I would imagine.
Third and stuff. To say, to say that something that can say, hey, wait a minute, there's something else going down here. Because as it is right now, that's the problem that we have, is that people don't know that there's other businesses down there because it looks empty.
It looks so different.
It looks so empty that down there, people don't see.
Yeah, we could look for drants for some archways or something along those lines.
There's nothing that would allow to say that physically see people walking, that they can see that there's stuff going on.
Because there are starting to be cool businesses in, on the west end, on, on that end. And, and again, we're probably the biggest proponents of the area. When people come in, it's like, where are you from? Oh, did you know about the prison museum? What, where's that? We go to the end of the street and.
Hang on, right.
Hang on, right. So we're constantly trying to get people that are here to stay here longer and explore the area better. But we kind of feel like we're alone in that aspect of, you know. So I love the idea of the QR code. Hey, hit the QR code on our window and see everything there is to see.
You can even periodically put those on the banners, the street banners.
Can you hit that with the phone?
You just use your telephone.
It's the passenger doing it, not.
On the radio, you're not supposed to use your phone. Look out for those new mediums.
The QR code is also interesting because if we decide to go to a corner banner or anything like that, that is, that is very brilliant idea. That is a brilliant idea. Wherever that's applicable, that is, that is a good idea. I think there's a lot of applications. You could even connect to calendar of events and all those sorts of things.
Yeah, I think that would be useful for helping getting people to start looking at what's going on nearby.
I really do like the idea of a permanent type of signage like you found or some of the ones you found.
And, and coming from.
Not so much a directory, but natural.
If you go that route with the QR code, put it on, it's above it. Open your phone and scan with your camera. If you don't know.
I know.
So.
So, so Ryan and Patrick, do you guys think that, that you have, is there, have you heard a unified message here that?
The ever hopeful.
When we're looking at taking this to the next city council from the month, which is April, correct?
Well, no.
We're still working on it.
It, it would have to go to planning commission first.
Okay, and when is that?
Planning commission happens the fourth Wednesday of the month.
Do you think it needs to be more research?
But I don't know that we have enough. Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm thinking one, two, three, so the 27th is the earliest, correct? So the 27th of March would be the next one, that's the.
That would be the earliest, yes.
Okay.
I don't know that we will be going.
Yeah, I know, but I'm, I'm thinking that. So what we're trying, what can, on, if we go to the permitted temporary restricted dates, you're wanting, what are, what timeframe are we looking? Seventy days, 120 days?
Seventy days would make it consistent with where we're friends at.
Okay. So basically, at this point, everything else is.
We're pretty.
On the same page as the, it's that section there. So the DBA meets actually next Tuesday. I was thinking of, because Debbie obviously couldn't make it tonight, she had some stuff come up. I was thinking about talking to her, then telling her where are, are sticking, the one sticking point we have and the other ideas of what we've come up with as far as your ideas and different things with staff picks, ours picks, what Amy and, and Ashley and all of the other clarifications and stuff, talking to her and seeing what her thoughts are and the rest of some of the other merchants act built at the meeting. And then seeing if it's something that, okay, yes, we can, we can live with this, you know, can we adjust this or whatever? And then go from there. And if we can come up with something, then work on trying to make it for March, at the end of March, if we can, if we can come to a consensus at that point. So basically. Yes, I know. But I know that it's, it's not a good idea and we understand that. Right. And so, I mean, we are, we are trying, willing to work. We are trying to come up with an idea that works, not, I mean, as a, it's not going to work for everybody, we understand that, nothing ever does. But we want the ability to set, come up with an idea or a solution that says, hey, there are things down here. There are things along Main Street. The stuff that people can physically see that will benefit the majority of the people.
But how long would it take to put those things in place?
Yeah, that, that, that's a question because the ordinance gets drafted by the city attorney. I necessarily have full control over his work.
But if we can, if we can try at least come up with consensus at that point, then at that point, then we can start working. If we can't get it by March, then we can hit it by April. So we're trying to try and do it at that point and see if we can come up with a solution um, that we can all agree on, um, that will work for the majority of the people. And then we can go from that point. Do you think that you would have time to do the research on a couple of new ideas that have come up this evening before that DBA meeting?
Before the DBA meeting? A week from yesterday?
Yeah, it's, it's next Tuesday. Or is that something that you think would be more helpful to do in April?
I think that may be more helpful to do in April.
Because that way you, the DBA would have all of the information as to whether some of these new ideas, like the archway or like the standard permanent February signs that are.
And I will definitely bring those, bring those up at the DBA meetings to say, okay, on top of the stuff that we've already discussed, that we've looked at, then you're also looking at possible archways, possible signs, something that goes across the street like we do on Royal Gorge to say, hey, wait a minute, there's stuff down here. Also with this, so the idea of what you guys found.
How did you find those?
Historical signs. So that we can look at that and bring to them and say. These are the sticking points, these are other solutions that we can look at. Is this something that we think that might work, um, and are willing to work with? To see.
Once it's, uh, has been talking about all these compromises, just make sure you don't end up just doing all, all of the things. Like, I don't think we can have.
No.
Things across the street and unlimited feather signs and bigger signs. We have a couple that we don't do all of it. Make sure that.
I think if we can use something like the historical signs, then pretty much the A-frame sign goes away unless it's specifically for like, hey, I'm having this. Um, and I think even for the most part, most people really, anybody that's used an A-frame sign very often hates them because they're problematic at, at best.
We kept putting them up, kept putting up.
You have yours attached to your thing, don't you?
They're really nice, heavy one.
Yeah. But I think, yeah, if we can find some sort of signage that works, then putting the feather flags up even for, you know.
Sales or whatever.
Or for the, you know, during a special event.
Promotion, random.
Then that makes sense.
Right.
The reason we want this feather flags back to Brendan's point is, hey, look, I'm here. So if we can find a way to say, hey, look, I'm here without those, then, hey, I'm happy to not haul that thing out every single morning. Honestly, I am.
So, so been to, to, you know, it seems to me that, that, um, speaking as a city councilman, I, I want to see the draft, you know, and I want, I think that, I think there needs to be a draft and I think it needs to go out to the parties. There may need to be another meeting. I'm not sure that we can do this by taking it to planning commission next. I mean, because there's, there's so many ideas that have been talked about.
Right.
And there's a lot of avenues that need to be explored. This is going to take a lot of time, it seems to me.
Yeah, and I don't think all of it should be in, in place because if you, and then if you start inundating with all of this, of all of this stuff, then we're back to being cluttered and being totally useless.
And the point is, we have to know what it is.
Yes.
That's, that's what we have to know, is what, what the it is.
I would, I would rather not go to the public hearing before planning commission with an amendment to the sign code that's only partially done.
I think, I think it has to be visibility for all businesses. That's what it is, how that looks.
That's, that's, that's a goal. Okay, that's not regulatory language.
No.
And that's what the it I think is, is the regulatory language with the, with the ideas. And I, so it seems to me that, that where we are is there's a lot of good ideas, there's a lot of nodding heads uh, around the table tonight, that, that's all really good. But the devil's in the details. And I think that we need to see another round of details before we're ready to, to make commitments about maybe some public meetings and stuff.
Are you proposing another joint planning commission, city council, general government meeting on this topic?
I'm, you know, the, uh, I think it could be a smaller meeting. I don't think it necessarily has to be planning commission and city council. We're going to be, council and planning commission are going to be the decision makers, right? Uh, and I think that it really, that, that perhaps the, like the previous meetings we've had with a couple of city council people, staff and the interested parties uh, to get together to make sure that we've got language that everybody agrees on. Or, or at least if we don't all agree on the specific language, where the exact areas of disagreement are so that, so that if we're, if we're demon ready, it can be then taken forward, the planning commission and city council. That's what I, that's, that's where it seems like we're at to me. What, what say you staff?
So I, I think what I'm hearing is work on this, refine it some more. Get back together with the merchants and the similar, similar people we had before and go through an iterative process that way and then we're into planning commission.
I, I think that's, I think that's the, and so if anybody smile and nod, nod if you agree. We'll, we'll give that a try.
Yeah, and I'll definitely, I'll bring some of these to, with Debbie and the rest of, for the DBA and stuff. And then what, I'll send you an email or Debbie will, and one of the two will send you an email letting you know, okay, this is what our thoughts are so that you can also look at it that way too with yours. But I will have it by the end of next week, um, once we have the meeting and stuff. And then that way you can see where we're at and if, are we still on this taking point or no, okay, we can live with this. We just need this other, maybe an idea on going this direction with the stuff that we've already discussed and kind of maybe narrow it down on a solution that we can all live with.
Let me, Jerry, if you tell them that idea.
Which idea? Are we going in the direction of the more either a better temporary signage solution or a permanent sign solution and eliminating feather flags? Is that, is that kind of what we're doing?
I think we're still working on that, that's the part that needs to be researched. When. And it says visibility for all.
Visibility for all.
You get the permanent sign to make of every business and then you're back to the picture with the flag in front of it.
Everyone needs it. Like property management doesn't, probably doesn't need it. I mean, it could be a permitted thing or an application. I don't know, so it's just some things to explore. I do have a question about the archway. Are we talking like something really strong, like permanent? Are we talking just about like those interchangeable things like we put over Highway? I think that's another thing to be researched. Something, I don't, I think that should be.
That's a little bit longer, yeah, longer.
Yeah.
I, I would say.
Something that goes across.
I, I think that'll be.
That delineate, hey, there's something. Whatever, whatever that looks like, that there's at least to say that there's something here.
And I would just request, if we can notice, I think there are three city council members who have attended various iterations. I think we probably all three are interested in it, I think that's one of them.
And we want to thank you for your time. I mean, it does feel a little bit like this horse is dead and keep eating it, but you guys still keep showing up. For us.
We are, we are. I think we're down to just, really, we really are down to one sticking point and we can come, I think we can come up with a solution. It's just a little more things and then trying to figure out, okay, if we're going to do this, then what we can, we have to kind of, not so much replace, but help in force. Or if we're going to do this, then what can we do? Just to find those, okay, if we go this way, it's one day, if we do this way, it's another. And to find that, that's. Reminded the world in negotiations where you are advised to expand the pie. Don't just assume that you can only do this or that, but think that, what is the goal here? What can you help with that?
So the, um, does anyone else have something that they, they have burning desire to say? My feeling is we probably better end on a high note.
There's been no bloodshed, how's that?
So as, as we presented to the DBA presently, we're looking towards alternatives to the butterfly. Seems to be the ultimate goal, right?
Or some, some alternative with the feather flag somehow.
Dawson, did you have something?
The fly the flag at this point. No, I want to be done.
Wave goodbye.
He must be.
Okay. We're concluded here tonight. Thank you all for coming.